To tonight's meeting, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, Select Board. Tom Burlington, please join me, rise and say.
Your pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the Constitution, under God, in the name of the Constitution, for all.
Get F five.
Which one is it?
All right, well, we figured that out. First order of business is we'll actually be convening an executive session. If somebody could go ahead and read the.
Yeah, the Select Board will convene to an executive session within forty-eight hours, having been given an order to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for outstanding union contracts, police patrol, police command. As an open meeting, may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, with the Select Board adjoining from the executive session and reconvening an open session.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion is made.
Second.
Motion made in second. All right, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mike Espoio.
Aye.
Joe Morandi.
Yes.
Mike Runyon.
Aye.
Jim Tigges.
Aye.
And Nick Priest, Chair, votes aye. All right, we're gonna enter executive session, people back.
Water and sewer skills, but he also got promoted to the position of working foreman, where he has been for a couple of years. With the departure of, excuse me, with the departure of Water and Sewer Superintendent in January, Paul Baron, and the promotion that we had at the time with Matt Davis, the position became vacant, and now we're recommending Aaron to fill the position formerly held by Matt Davis. So, so we're very excited to promote him, and with that, let's pass it to Town Administrator.
Thank you, John. With John's recommendation, I appoint Aaron Chase to the position of Water and Sewer Lead Foreman in the Burlington Public Works Department, and ask that the Board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So will.
Seconded.
Okay, moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five zero zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Aaron's here today.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, John.
All right, moving right along, four ninety-eight, we've got an update on Fifteen Wellesley Avenue. Mr. Gino.
Good evening to the Board. This evening what I have is a housekeeping measure related to a pending auction on May eighteenth, Fifteen Wellesley Ave. This is just, I was, one of my responsibilities is under Chapter Mass General Law, Chapter sixty, as far as the collection of taxes, the handling of tax title, and that Fifteen Wellesley Ave is a property taxes were owed since two thousand nine, and we put him at the tax title in two thousand eleven. The Board of Health had, I believe, well, I know they had condemned the property, it was in squalor, and we got a request to see if we could move it ahead to foreclose on it, for the betterment of the neighborhood and the town, so. We did that, we, I had hired a new firm in Mavs of twenty-one to handle our tax title matters, and they've been doing a great, great job in that process. They took the Fifteen Wellesley, the land court took about a year to date, which was fast-tracked to get that property back. I had the assistance of the Board of Health writing letters, the building inspector, and on April thirteenth, we received notice that we have the property free and clear. They notified, they followed the law to the letter of the law as to trying to contact people. Once that took place, I contacted a few of the department heads, talked to, spoke to the Water Health, and we met at the property, took a look at it, had, Town Administrator was with me that day, the Conservation Department head, and reviewed the property, and just basically came to the conclusion it was in the best interest of the town to move ahead with the auction at that point. I'm here tonight, I, I'm just doing this basically, as I said, as a housekeeping measure to pursue Mass General Law, Chapter sixty, seventy-seven B, that it be known that Burlington Select Board appoints me as the tax title custodian. I already am, per my job description, per prior, per the bylaws of the town on Chapter, Article seven, Chapter two, so. Yeah, it's just a housekeeping measure, I'm asking the Board to do this in case there becomes a question at the time of the auction by a bidder who feels there may have been a, some misstep, that we have that taken care of.
All right, Paul, anything from you before I go to the Board?
Uh, no, just wanted to, to know that Gary did a good job of communicating with all the departments about the property, I think we talked about it at Department Head Meeting, and, you know, we thought it might be of interest to Conservation or Public Works, and we viewed the property with John Keely, Eileen Coleman, the Assistant Conservation Director, as well as John Sanchez, and they did not see a municipal purpose for this, this piece of land.
All right, questions from the Board? Jim, you wanna start?
Um, just a, have we heard from the abutters at all, on us, any of the neighbors?
I wrote to the abutters prior to the approval of the auction, just because I thought they should be aware of the fact there's gonna be more traffic, I have not heard from any of the abutters.
Okay, um, this actually may be a question for Town Council, but if this goes through, I know this is kind of like, I think Mr. Morandi and I had similar issues on the Board of Appeals, can the sale be conditioned to limit the size of any future structure? Mr. Secretary, I'm gonna ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, ask Town Council if that's something that can be answered tonight, if not, or?
Um, I, I'm, I give you a positive answer tonight, the answer is no, it's, it's an outright sale, the limitation is zoning, that, that's your limitation, so that would be the, otherwise it's a straight-up auction, cuz it's for tax title, right?
I'm just not sure who has, who can answer this, it's only a quarter acre lot, does the same zoning fifteen, fifteen, thirty apply?
It's got a structure on it, right?
It has a structure.
So it's, it's a pre-existing, if, if the zoning has changed since the structure was built, and I don't know the property specifically, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so you could modify that, but you'd need a special permit likely to do it, depending on how, the extent of the modification.
All right, so it can't go bigger than it is now, or is?
No, it could, it depends, you could exacerbate an existing non-conformity, but you can't create a new one.
Okay, all right, all right, that's all I have for now.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Joe? We gotta wait to hear from the public first. I'll make a comment afterwards. Absolutely, Mike?
No comments right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, Gary, a question for you. I know when you mentioned that there are ninety K in the hole for the, the taxes, right, that, that, that's what's owed to the town?
Your obligation to the town for taxes and interest and legal fees is approca, in, is approximately ninety thousand dollars, might be eighty-five, eighty-seven, legal fees, I haven't added that in yet.
Okay, so, assuming that the, the Board tonight said, you know what, like, because of where the butts, let's go ahead and just raise the house and clean it up and just leave it vacant, it would be ninety K lost, plus whatever it would cost for the remedial removal of the, the current structures, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
At the present time, we're not, the Board of Health has advised us not to go into the property, there, there is numerous equipment, structures, trash on that site, it is in squalor, and it's gonna be costly to whoever, the auction is as-is, whereas the, it's the buyer would be responsible for cleaning up, the buyer would be responsible for following the rules and regulations and the building codes to the town of Burlington.
Okay, all right, Patricia, I know that you wanted to speak on this.
Mr. Chairman, can I do a quick follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I just wanna clarify something that was just brought up, um, if someone comes in, a buyer, and they find asbestos, like oil in the ground, or asphalt shingles, it's their responsibility, but if we retained it, that becomes our responsibility.
That's correct.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, if there's, if, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
If there's hazardous material on the property, and the town owns it, it becomes the owner, and under Chapter twenty-one A, there's strict liability, so you would have the liability.
The town would have the liability.
The town would have the liability, but if the town is never the owner, it does not have the liability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, Patricia, I know you wanted to speak on this, you've got two minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate that the town is addressing this issue, because I've walked by that property many, many times over the past twenty years, and so I appreciate that it's being addressed. I would respectfully request that the Board put a pause on the auctions to further explore with the neighborhood what options might be available, as someone who walks by, again, parking at the end of the dead-end street is, is really atrocious when it, when it's a busy season, and people are literally parking between the trees further into the, into the conservation area than they should. I could also envision that we may wanna address a lack of recreation facilities on the, on this, the Peach Orchard side of Wind Street, there is no public playground for children or adults, and that might be an ideal location for that, so again, I appreciate the efforts to clean up the area, I would ask the Board to consider pausing the auction to explore what the neighborhood might want, just as I was before the Board several months ago, when we were talking about the intersection of Peach Orchard and Winds, and Winter Street and the sidewalks, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. All right, would anybody else? Sherry, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would just like to echo Patricia's comments about, this is the first time I've, I've heard about this auction, and it's a piece of property that is next to the, the Mill Pond, and I, I'm not sure if there's a rush, or I guess that's a question I have, is there a rush to get rid of the property, or can we, as Patricia said, pause and just investigate, what is that actual potential of our liability, and to clean it up and to do all that, and what are the real costs for that? So, I guess that's my question, is just, is there a rush, do we need to do this tonight right away, or can we pause a couple of months and just investigate, so, thank you.
So, Gary, real quick, is, is there anything time pressing on this, or if we delayed this, would it cause an issue?
Uh, there'll be, I, I can tell there'll be some administrative costs, because we've moved ahead with this auction, and, you know, I involved as many department heads in the discussion regarding this property, and I don't see, and from a resident of this town, also, I don't see this piece of property being an asset to the company, I think, to the, to the town, I think putting more traffic down there by putting any structure would be detrimental to that neighborhood, we've already, it's a small street, I have seen the car, I've gone down a few times, I have seen cars parked down there, and there's an access to the Mill Pond Reservoir that is not guarded, protected, and again, as a resident, I'm somewhat concerned what would happen if we made it more accessible for people to park there, and people maybe not during the daytime, but disturbing that neighborhood in the evening, that's my concern, and it was April thirteenth, I acted upon it, as I couldn't, as I said, notified, it went up onto our website, we posted in the library, in the town hall, in, in front of our window, so we've done everything we can do. From my standpoint, I like to expedite this process, take any liability, we, I also notified Brian Lynch from the Accounting Office to make sure we had proper insurance coverage, but the more it becomes known, I don't want people on that property, it, it is a hazard, so, one month, two month, I, I think is, is somewhat detrimental, it's been on, it's been sitting there for ten years, at least twelve years, thirteen years, I've never heard anyone talk about, let's do something on that parcel, and I do think the, from talking to people who I consider knowing their business, the cost to clean that site, there is some potential risk with that for the buyer, and they're aware of that, they're assuming it, I would not want to assume that liability for the town, you're looking, and that's just my, I have my personal opinion as a resident, I also have my respons, fiduciary responsibility to the town.
Understood, no, I.
My sense.
Um, is there anybody else who'd like to, to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna turn it back to the Board for any additional questions, comments, we should all start with you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, well, after listening to everything I've heard from the residents and, and the people in the room tonight, and on, what's that called?
Zoom?
Zoom.
Webex?
Webex, Zoom, whatever it is, I have sat back and I looked at this piece of property, actually drove down there, I think the best thing for the town to do is to get rid of this piece of property, I think at nighttime it could be detrimental to young kids going down there and sit in the parking lot and just going off into the woods, which some of us might have done in earlier days, to do things we weren't supposed to do, I think if I was a resident, I wouldn't wanna park a lot across the street from my house, so looking at it from a resident's standpoint, I'm in hundred percent favor of the auction going off, and after listening to Gary tonight, I think that he's right on board with everything he's done as far as legally and what we need to do, I think this piece of property needs to go, let somebody else handle all the trash, and if there is something in there that we don't want, so, that's just my opinion, thank you.
Okay, would anybody else have to make a comment? Mike?
Yeah, just, actually, question and a comment. So if it goes to auction, I suppose it's for, for council, town's owed ninety thousand, roughly, if it's auctioned at three or four hundred, who gets the excess funds?
The town.
Town keeps the entire.
Because the town is foreclosed.
We've exhausted all of our efforts to locate any heirs to the property, is that right?
Yes, legally we have, I've been told there is a, a granddaughter or someone who may not have responded, I've talked to our legal counsel a bit, from the tax attorneys, about maybe setting some, setting something aside until we can either locate that person or see if we could set up some sort of trust fund for that person, other than that, the proceeds come to the town. The ninety thousand dollars of the tax and the interest upon taking in the foreclosure, it, from a dollars and cents standpoint, we're owed that, if you looked at our balance sheet right now, you'd see that ninety thousand is no longer there, because we have a piece of property, the town is not in, in the business to be real estate owners for non-town activities, so.
Okay.
We, we are actively pursuing, I should state that, we're actively pursuing our tax title and people that owe taxes, we've collected probably over a million dollars in the last twelve months, maybe eight fifty, nine hundred, I might have embellished a bit, but we're doing that, this past, right now, we're putting only eight people into tax title for this year, which is, it's a result of our aggressive approach in notifying people of the taxes, identifying for them to owe the tax, you're going into, once you get into tax title, you have to pay sixteen percent interest, and that is, that can be debilitating to, to somebody, you're better off looking at different means, and the, so we're, we're pursuing that, I don't have anything right now that I, I know that is gonna be coming back to the town, we're not foreclosing, we're trying all legal means to, to collect the debt, if we can, without doing that, I don't have anything else that I could tell you right now, we know.
I'm sure, I'm sure the town takes no joy in.
No.
In going to this, to these lengths. I've been aware of this, this property for well over a decade, been down there numerous times, either recreationally or professionally with the fire department and stuff like that, it's been a hazard for, for a long, long, long time, I know the people in the area are aware of that property, even more so than I am, I, you know, if they had some ideas with it, I would, would have loved to have heard from them long ago, I don't see any purpose in delaying the auction at this point.
Jim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I was really up in the, on the fence about this piece of property, because of its location, and what I've heard here tonight, the fact that Mr. Gino, Gino reached out to the abutters, didn't get a, a response, the fact that Conservation and DPW both said they have no use for it, myself, I've also been to that house professionally, like Select Moranian has over the years, I know what it's like, and the unknown potential hazards, any asbestos, oil, lead paint, asphalt, any of that stuff, that tips the scales for me to think it's probably in the best interest for the, us to sell that property, and because of all that, it's, like Moranian said, it's been like that for years, for decades, for at least a decade, even if we had it, we don't know when that house would be, or that property would be reclaimed, so to speak, so those potential hazards will remain until that property is rectified. Based on everything I've heard tonight, and again, I started out not knowing which way I was gonna vote on this, after hearing this, I think the quicker we get rid of it, to get it out of our hands, the better it is for the town, because of the potential liabilities, so that's just my thought.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, real quick, I wanna echo Select Moranian, before I lived on Proudie, I lived at nineteen Town Line Road, which is the very last house on Town Line Road, and it was nice to live there, cuz you'd walk to the, the reservoir through the woods, but I would always walk my dogs late at night uptown line and open this up to a park or something, opens us up to like a, a security risk or potential for unwanted people to come into the neighborhood, I would see cars at the end of Town Line Road, and I'd get nervous walking my dogs later at night, and I think if you kept this and tried to make it to a park, you're opening yourself up to something like that, and policing it, I, I wouldn't be in favor of keeping it, especially in the state that it's in, so, that's all I wanted to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, thank you, gentlemen, I, my biggest concern here is a liability to the town, not with regards to safety, but what could be going on within or on that property, what I, what I would like to ask the team here is, this feels a little rushed for the Board, if we could put this on sooner to have a conversation about it, if there's an opportunity from the Board's perspective of something that we might wanna do with the property, I'd like to see that happen, I, I mean, I'm in agreement, I think that the liability in this case warrants us to move forward, I, I don't wanna leave it sitting there, I think, and, you know, we can sell it for three hundred thousand and keep that, or we can possibly fall into a money pit, à la Tom Hanks, you know, and find ourselves in an even worse situation, so, moving forward, you know, if, if there's an opportunity for us to have a discussion about this at one meeting, let it simmer for a little bit, bring it back at another meeting, I would, I would prefer that, so that's, that's just my, my two cents.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Again, I dealt with the department heads in the town, if I thought there was any interest, or would have created a change in how I would have brought that up to the Board and, and talked about it, and to me, and some of the other properties may, may result in that, this particular one, as I said, I, I, Building Services came down and secured it for, which is, for the DPW, I asked, Conservation came, I talked to the Board of Health, those are the parties involved, and they all seemed to be, I can't say, you know, overly joyful in their, their decision, but they all came to that same conclusion, again, it was here, but yeah, I would, I would do that, I would just do that in normal course, I would talk to, to Paul, talk to John, and get as many people as involved, I tried to get the consensus, that was my goal, that's why I was actually away for a few days when we got the prop, when we got it, and they put the notice up for auction, and I stopped it, I said, we haven't notified the abutters, I haven't notified some of the department heads, I'd like to get their opinion on it, so we, I did stop, stop it immediately.
Yeah.
Out, said Dave, so, and that's just, I think it's a common courtesy.
No, for sure, and, and.
I would do that.
I think we're on the same page, all I'm saying is, we, we trust what you guys are doing, for sure, and I think that the outcome of this particular property probably wouldn't have changed three weeks ago versus today, I'm just saying that, like, if we for some reason said no now, now we're costing the taxpayers even more, because now that the auctions are being posted, and, you know, so if we decide to swing in a different direction for some reason, you know, our wiggle room is that much less, that's all. But I mean, I think, given this particular property, you know, what you've done isn't, I'm not saying anything is wrong, I'm just asking for a little bit more heads up from our perspective, that's all, it's appreciated. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion if.
Make a motion to put the house up for auction at Fifteen Wellesley Ave?
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, five zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, can you just take a motion to make Gary the custodian, please?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to make Gary the, what was it?
Custodian.
Custodian, thank you, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to four ninety-nine, Proposal One Twenty-eight Business Council, Melissa, you're here, right? Yep, I see ya, what's going on?
Hi, um, good evening, for the record, Melissa Tintalklis, Economic Development Director, I'm here just today with this item to give you some information, as you know, in terms of economic development, the nexus and access to jobs is critical, and so one piece of what we, you know, kind of look at through the office and the lens and interact with different organizations is transportation, and tonight, we're talking about the One Twenty-eight Business Council, it's a Transportation Management Association, and they've been working with us, I've known them, and the Executive Direct, Director Monica Tibbetts for several years now, and full disclosure, I've served as the Board Member on the One Twenty, One Twenty, Twenty-eight Business Council, so, given that relationship and given that they, you know, move forward on pilot projects, they've been working with Susan at, she's the Transportation Coordinator in Lexington, to explore a pilot project, and, sorry about that, and this pilot project is exploring, I like to show a quick map, but the idea is to explore further connections from Lexington, but also into Burlington, and looking at existing connections to Lowell, and not to redouble efforts of the MBTA, but to try to serve some of the business and resident community in town, it's still forming, and I know from my understanding, Selectman Priest, that Monica also made a presentation at the Transportation Committee as well, and the idea here tonight is really to just share with you that we've been in these conversations, and they're really asking if Burlington wants to be a partner, moving forward on the grant process and looking at any kind of pilot program, and like I said, it's still forming, so there hasn't been cost estimates developed at this point, what I'd like to do quickly is just share with you a map of the corridor that they're looking at, and see if I can do this, let's see, share, are you able to see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, here, let's see now if it'll allow me to, the two corridors, it's the pink corridor here, and this is the Burlington, if you, oh, does it, oh, here, it's lighting up, this is the pink corridor is the hub or corridor circulation kind of route that they're proposing that would connect Burlington to Elway, and then the other one is more specific for Burlington and kind of the residents and kind of connections within the community. And then the other one is more specific for Burlington and kind of the residents and kind of connections within the community. These could be looked at as two different routes or together. I am still learning kind of some of the ins and outs and they're still seeking input from private sector, property owners in particular, as well as, you know, us as a town, if we are interested in, you know, kind of furthering this. But I just wanted to get this before you because if this, if we move forward, they would probably look for a letter of support. And then we'd have to talk to, you know, talk kind of the details about what it would be to fund, to be, you know, a funding participant in something like this as well.
Yeah, so thank you, Melissa. This is, this is one of those things when, when I sat in with the Transportation Committee.
On this, we actually were expecting a grant proposal from the 128 Business Council. We were just looking to hear from them on what they could, you know, maybe partner with us on, and this just kind of happened to coincide. And so essentially what they're looking to do is instead of just doubling down on microtransit, they're looking to try and drive as much, you know, into the main artery, we'll say, of the MBTA or, you know, public transit. To do so, they need to partner with private businesses and, you know, towns to make that happen. And so they need to kind of get all the ducks in a row to make it function. The reason that I asked Melissa to speak on this tonight is because we only have one other meeting until they begin to finalize their, wow, words on a Monday is not working for me, their draft grant proposal. There we go. So June 6th is when that begins. The final submission for the grant needs to be in by June 24th. So what I didn't want to do is just spring this on us at our next May meeting and have a scramble about whether or not we wanted to consider a letter of support for this program. Because it's a pilot program, so it's going to only last 12 to 18 months. But they did say, the Transportation Committee, consider that, you know, whatever you do in the pilot program would sustain for three to five years. Because we don't want to just pop in a pilot program and then, you know, have it dissipate after 12 months. So this is just to kind of open everyone's minds to it, ask some initial questions if you have any. And then Melissa and I and probably Rick Park will be back on May 23rd to just discuss further in more detail as we learn things in this growing process. So that's just the quick heads up on that.
Can I just add something to that?
Yeah.
Can I go back a few years now? Selectman Petuto was always our representative to that group there. And I don't know, Paul, that we've ever filled that liaison position to that group since Mr. Petuto has left.
128 Business Council?
Something, yeah, he had something along those lines.
Rep on MAPC, which was Mike Spejo. And Melissa's been functioning as the liaison from the town to this 128 Business Council.
Okay, so we have a voice there, okay. All righty.
So any burning questions or thoughts from the board? Okay, great. Melissa, thank you for the update and we'll keep working on this between now and our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Next up, 500, we've got the development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, you received the presentation on the potential housing zoning change for the Rogers Piano site. Town meeting will be taking that up probably on Wednesday. I'm guessing, depending if things go well. You guys received the proposal, but what this land development agreement is, it puts in writing all the agreements that have been made along the way between the developer and the town and puts them in writing before it goes to town meeting so that we have everything in writing and enforceable in an agreement. And this is a recent change suggested by Town Council after the previous town meeting when we had the Kent House rezoning and there was a lot of confusion about sort of what the community benefits were related to that rezoning. So this is a best practice as suggested by Town Council. We've talked a little bit and provided you with the documents so you can see what the benefits promised in return for this project are. All the board is doing is approving the development agreement, putting it in writing and protecting the town's interest. Ultimately, town meeting will decide whether or not this project goes forward at some point during this session. So Lisa, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. Thank you, Paul and members of the board. The only thing I would add is that we're missing one attachment. So there's an attachment called a Notice of Development Agreement. And it goes on record so that if anybody, if the developer goes to sell his interest in the property or her interest in the property, it follows with it. So they're noticed of what the requirements are. That hasn't been executed yet, so it will be executed by Wednesday. And what I'd like the board to do, if the board is so inclined, is to approve the development agreement, subject to receipt of the notice of agreement. And then you can just come into town hall and sign it at your leisure after that. And that way, everything will just kind of fall into place. But Mr. Vaughn wasn't able to get it to me today. And so seeing as how it appears as though Article 35 and 36 won't be on until Wednesday, I think that's a safe move.
Okay, great.
Before you go any further, Mr. Chairman, the last time this group was in front of us about this stuff, I included myself in the meeting. So I believe I have to do the same thing again with this, don't I?
I believe so.
Right before. Okay. Just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I'll just take one second.
Yeah, come on.
It's Peter Carbone with Malaya. They've been signed, just so you know, at least the two other ones. So I have to pick them up. Just so you know, they have been signed, those notices. Tom just emailed me on the way here saying they're at his office and to grab them. So just as further comfort.
Okay.
Lisa doesn't have them yet.
I haven't seen them yet, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, though.
Yep.
Awesome. All right.
And any questions behind me? I'm happy to answer them, Mike.
Okay, so any questions, comments from the board?
I have just a brief comment, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I got to congratulate Attorney Vaughn and Mr. Caboni and the development team here. They've been very, very fluid and flexible with the various committees that they've had to go in front of. And I'm honestly, I'm quite surprised you made it to May Town Meeting. I didn't think you really had much chance of getting there in May. So congratulations to, again, Attorney Vaughn, yourself and your partners for working so well with all of the boards and committees in town here. And I think we have a, I think you've got a nice proposal there.
Thank you. And back to the town. We couldn't have done it without a lot of people. When Mr. Spejo was on the planning board, he knows all the meetings we went through. We had a lot of back and forth. I think great dialogue with the neighbors, with all the groups, with Sherry's group, lane uses and zoning, et cetera. So appreciate all the, you know, all the hard work that's gone in. And we'll see, probably Wednesday. I think I doubt we'll be on tonight. We're pretty close to the end of the agenda, but we'll see what happens hopefully on Wednesday.
All right. Anything else on the board? No? All right, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the development agreement with the,
Subject to.
Subject to receipt of the additional document that Town Council referenced.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Four zero zero.
Thank you all.
Good luck here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. All right, well, Mike is fetching Joe, 501, approve a Fox Hill feasibility study. Mr. Kuta, come on down. All right, Fox Hill, take it away.
So again, I want to thank the select board for their support in this. This is the Fox Hill feasibility study, which is phase two of the statement of interest that was approved. So we are now able to enter into feasibility. What you have before you is the feasibility study agreement. We will also be asking the school committee tomorrow night to read it into their record as well and vote on that. We need a support from the select board and the school committee. We need to submit that to MSBA before we can actually move further into the feasibility study.
Okay.
Similar to the last time, I would prefer if you were to read it as presented.
Oh, would you now? I bet you'd like that. All right, questions, comments from the board? Mike, we'll start with you.
No, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Joe?
No, no comment.
Mike?
No, sir.
Jim?
No, sir.
All right. Yeah, I mean, you know, this is, this is great. I'm looking forward to seeing what the feasibility study says. I know that the state's been quite interesting with their own choice of metrics around this whole process. But I appreciate you sticking through it and making sure that we, you know, get the best kind of shake. Paul, what's up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let the board know that town meeting did approve the funding for the feasibility study at the last town meeting, so.
Yes, they did. Oh, was it 1.5 million?
Yes.
All right, well, then if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain, now, ah, question. It's two motions, right?
No, there's just one motion here. The bottom one is actually what the school committee has to do, so it was on the same piece of paper.
Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board on behalf of the town enter into Massachusetts School Building Authority feasibility study agreement dated May 9th, 2022 for the Fox Hill Elementary School and to authorize the Chair, Nicholas C. Priest, to execute the agreement on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. There you have it.
Thank you all for the support, Paul.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll see you later tonight.
See you.
That's right. All right, next up, we have 502 warrant articles. Mr. Dinesio, this is going to you. Paul, who's picking it up?
This is just, we had asked the board all along if there were any additional warrant articles you may want to weigh in on, but we do have a couple to present to you. And for that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you, Paul. John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first two articles have to do with a contract for both police unions. This obviously isn't ideal to be doing at the last minute, but just sometimes that's how these things come together. There was a real push and a willingness from both of the police unions and the administration to get a deal done before this May town meeting. Somewhat important, that was because we were trying to get a deal together for body worn cameras for our offices. There's a warrant article that we'll hopefully get to tonight for asking for some money to fund that project for next year. So there was a real push for that. The first article is Article 20 and it's to fund the Police Command Officers' Contract in the amount of $72,832.
All right, and we'll take these one at a time?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. All right, so Mr. Dinesio is looking for us to make a vote on Article 20. Okay, it moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next article, Article 21, is to fund the Police Patrolmen's Association contract. Everything I just said, ditto for that. And that dollar amount is for 123,946. Important to point out that this money, it would be, is actually a transfer from negotiated settlements. I didn't say that the first time. So this has already been, it's already in the budget. It's already in the budget that's included, that's at guideline. It doesn't increase anything. It just moves it from that holding account that we have for unsettled contracts into the actual police budget so that we can pay for it.
Okay. Was that a professional ditto?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I also didn't mention, I'm not going to pause for questions unless you guys have one, so shout out if you want to stop and say something. All right. So Article 21, entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 21.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero on Article 21. All right, John, what else we got?
I can take the next one, Mr. Chairman. The next one is the article for the town to purchase the affordable housing unit at 119 South Bedford. We put this article on as placeholder so that the board would have some options as to what to consider. In the meantime, we did receive a vote from the Housing Partnership Committee, which was 5-1 for the town not to purchase this unit and to allow it to be sold at fair market value with the town to recoup all the funds in excess of the affordable housing maximum resale price would go into the Affordable Housing Special Revenue Fund. I know, remember, Menoranyan may want to comment on it in a little bit more detail. It is one of the options that we have. We don't like to see these units become unaffordable and lose their deed restrictions. But in this particular case, with the financing options and the amount of investment the home needed, we just didn't think it was a reasonable deal for the town to do it this time.
Okay, all right. Before I turn to you, do you also want us to vote in the negative?
I would request that the board vote this down and actually vote to withdraw this article from the town meeting tonight.
Oh, just vote to withdraw it?
Yes.
All right, Mike, go ahead.
I have a different opinion. I was that one vote of the Housing Partnership Committee. I hate to lose any of our affordable housing inventory at all. Particularly a three-bedroom, single-family home style, incredibly rare in Burlington for a three-bedroom affordable unit to make itself available. The circumstances, however, are getting more and more difficult. We own about 12 of these down here on South Bedford Street. Most of you are aware. They've served the town well for roughly 25 years now. The house in question was actually three generations of Burlington families living in here. These folks are now at, they've been here about 25 years. They're, time for them to have different lifestyle changes and time to move on. The problem is with, we all know, the escalating real estate values here in Burlington, it make it virtually impossible for us to, under the terms of the deed restriction is a maximum allowable sale price to the seller. And it leaves no room whatsoever for us to be able to find a qualified buyer if the home is in need of update and repair, which is what we have here. Home needs considerable updates or repair. According to the building inspector, it could be anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000 in necessary updates. Is asbestos in there and so on and so forth. Having said that, I still think that I hate to let this opportunity go. I've twisted a lot of arms. I'm not getting and haven't gotten a very good result from it. So I'm going to throw a couple of things out there to you guys and see if anything sticks tonight. We have an affordable housing fund with roughly $1 million in it right now. We've had this account for several years. We've not really accessed it, utilized it that often, rarely. I've been in talks with the Housing Authority. They are interested in the property. They're attempting to find funding to purchase the property. However, they do not have the necessary funding in their operating budget for repairs of the house. So the first option would be, again, I'm just going to throw it out there. If they can come up with the funding, allow the Housing Authority to purchase the property, we would assist them with the necessary upgrades and repairs that are required to house a family over there. And it would remain in our inventory for many, many, many years to come as a rental property, which I think most of these homes that are left out there are better suited as rental properties and resale for a number of reasons. The other option, again, nobody seems to like except me, is we purchase the house, we make the necessary repairs, and then we offer it to a first-time home buyer without income limitations. The only caveat is that they were a first-time home buyer and that they have a, we would place a five-year deed restriction on the property so that they don't just buy it and flip it. They would at least have to remain in the house for five years and then they would own it free and clear of any deed restrictions. We'd be able to offer the house that I'd like to say, you know, offer it to somebody of moderate means at around the 399, 420 price range once the, once the repairs are completed. So those are, those are a couple of things. If you guys have any interest in exercising either of those two options, so be it. But you can tell by Mr. Sacarino's expression that he doesn't like it. But again, it's just something I've been doing for 25 years. I just, I don't just, I don't just quit because it's hard or I don't just quit because it's convenient. I think we have an obligation to. I think we have an obligation to make every effort to provide affordable housing in Burlington. I'm not saying we do a bad job. We do a pretty good job actually compared to our, our neighbors, and we should be proud of that. But I'm not going to just let it go. I'm just leaving it, I'm just leaving it at that.
Okay. Select Marandy has poured himself out of the table. Would anyone like to follow that? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if this is going to be pulled off the agenda, what does that mean for us? We're just going to take it off and leave the house the way it is right now? We're gonna, what are we doing? I mean, are these options that Mike's talking about available later on?
I believe that the, the Housing Authority to buy it as the affordable buyer is still an option if, if we withdraw this warrant article. Really, the biggest problem is the investment to fix the house up. So we'd be basically putting an extra $100,000. We would buy it for approximately $340,000, put $100,000 plus into it, and then sell it for $340,000. Now, I guess the, the question in your head would be, you know, could we help 10 different families with that $100,000 loss that we're going to take? Or, you know, what else could, could those funds be utilized for in, in order to advance affordable housing? You know, Mike puts his heart and soul into this. One thing I would do is remind him that when we just did 117 South, South Bedford, he said never again. And he's already back to the table to want to take on general contractor responsibilities here. But the difference with that property was we were fortunate enough to buy it for $150,000. And that gave us the flexibility to invest some money into it, sell it to an affordable family, and then put the money back into the trust fund almost as a sort of a break even. And that's why I think that, you know, the option for the town to purchase it is not the best option, in my opinion.
So we're still at that point where if we take it off the agenda, it's still there?
I believe that we still have the opportunity for the Housing Authority to come in and purchase the property.
Discuss later on.
Yes.
Still come up in discussion. So we take this off the agenda. It can still come up in discussion in a week from now or the next meeting or, or at a subcommittee meeting or something like that, right?
We have, we have time specific. We have 120 days for April 22nd, when we received notice from the seller. We could either go or get off the pot by, in 120 days.
We still have quite a little bit of time.
We have a little bit of time.
But to clarify, only through the Housing Authority mechanism?
Right. I think it would not be responsible of us to arrange a sale to another affordable buyer without the improvements into the property. I think we'd be putting a, a family in a really bad position if we did what we would normally do on one of these, which is try to facilitate a sale to another affordable buyer. I think the condition of the property is what makes that option really not viable right now. But Mike, the option that Mike brought forward of the Housing Authority potentially buying it, I do believe we could still try to pull that together in the interim.
Sure.
Thank you.
Question to you. Do you think the Housing Authority can buy it?
They're looking at their financing options. I, I just spoke with them just a few short days ago, so they'll need a little more time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my ignorance, but maybe this is Mr. Sagarino that can answer this. If we buy it for $340,000 and then put $100,000 into it, why do we have to sell it at $340,000? Well, if we want to sell it to another affordable family based upon the, the metrics for the region.
Well, my, my second option, Paul, was we sell it for $440,000 for what we could into it without a deed restriction.
But that only works if, if we buy it.
So this is, this is the.
Following.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to finish. So, so following the article, though, is how we have to do that? Like if we, if we withdraw the article, Option B is no longer on the table?
Option for the town to purchase it is no longer on the table.
Okay. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So you want to wrap up and then I'll?
Uh, yeah, just, when I don't know something, something, I go to someone who does. And my housing guru is Select Runyon. Whenever I have a housing question, I ask him because, as he stated, we know he's been doing this for 25 years. And I agree, this is a rare opportunity for the town, especially in today's market. You're not the only one who thinks like that, Mike. I, I agree with you on this, so we should look at options.
Okay. Joe, back to you.
Oh.
All right, Mike, anything?
I'll say it, Mr. Jim.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion, whether you guys want to withdraw it, want to leave it alone.
Let me just get this straight. So if we withdraw it, there's no chance of the town buying it whatsoever?
Only the Housing Authority.
Or the Housing Authority.
If, if we withdraw it, the Housing Authority can, we can't. Correct.
Okay, that, that makes a big difference.
We can't because.
We can't as a town, but the, but the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority can. Assuming they find the funds.
Assuming they find the funds.
They can get the financing, they could, and we couldn't. I think there's still a little time to negotiate something, but, but not a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I just think the issue is how do we want to, what do we want to vote on? In other words, what if Mike has a suggested motion or? I don't mean to put you in the spot. I'm just, I think, do we put it on, take it off? What's the best way to accomplish what you'd like?
Based on what Paul was saying is that we can vote just whether or not to leave it on or take it off. If we say leave it on, then we're saying leave all the options open and let it self out. If we're saying withdraw it, then we're really only leaving the Housing Authority to their own devices or it's going to, you know, go by the wayside and go back into the, the general pool.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, Select Runyon, I don't, I guess don't mean to put you in the spot. What do you recommend?
I don't have a crystal ball. I can tell you, though, I, I have not received a lot of support from town meeting members or the Housing Partnership group, which is comprised of, you know, some town meeting members. I think it would be a tough sell at town meeting, to be honest with you. That's, that's just my, my gut feeling.
Well, I mean.
I think the, I think the, the, the better likelihood is the Housing Authority finding, finding financing and then, you know, us working with them to help make the necessary repairs and upgrades.
Sure.
I don't want to try and, I don't, you know, I just, that's my, if, if it was, if I was, if I was driving the, the bus, then I would have, I would have just bought it. This is not tax pay money. It's money that's in a separate account already. I think, I think it makes a better rental unit.
Yeah. Eileen, I see your hand up real quick. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am a secular town meeting member, Precinct Four, and also a member of the Housing Partnership. So just a few things. And I, Paul, Mr. Sagarino said it best, but just to reiterate, I mean, one of the reasons why we voted to pass on this property, as much as we want to keep it in the portfolio, is the estimated cost of repair. I'm not sure that, that it couldn't cost more than $100,000. I mean, I really don't think we, we know, we have a good sense. And guess what? Three months from now, that could increase 25% because of the economy, et cetera. The other thing is, as you know, we're having a housing needs assessment report, and that should be finished in June or July. You know, that will give us direction and, you know, offer options about what we could do with the money. And so we, we felt, the majority of us felt, that the money that we would get, that is the differential between what they could sell it for, $340,000, and a fair market value, let's say that's $500,000. So $150,000 or thereabouts, put that in a fund and, you know, use it for something that we think is a little more viable. And, you know, we also talked about rental, and I think the consensus was we're not in the rental business. We don't want to be doing that. And as for the Housing Authority, we, this is the first I've heard of it. And so, I mean, I understand the timing, but it would have been nice to have a conversation, you know, in, in the committee. But in any event, for those reasons, and again, to reiterate, Mr. Sagarino, we think our money and resources can be better spent somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eileen. Sorry.
Well, I think the discussion's been back and forth pretty good.
Yeah, I think this is, we will discuss this.
I'd say, folks, you can leave it on the, you can leave it on the warrant. You can just take a no vote on it. You can take a yes to buy, a no to let someone decide, but there will be necessary to bring it before Ways and Means Wednesday night. So if somebody wants to make that pitch at Ways and Means Wednesday, it's certainly within the realm of possibility. So withdraw is not your only option, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Sure.
It's our, our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. All right, so with that information.
I just think that the best thing to do right now is withdraw it and let's see what the, what the committee wants to do afterwards. And then they can do whatever, whatever they need to do in the next 120 days. I mean, if they can do it or not do it.
Right.
I understand Mr. Runyon's experience with this. He's been doing this for how many years, Mike?
Well, well.
Just, we'll just go with the while. So, but I mean, I think let, let them, let them see what they can do.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm half inclined to, to, to leave it and, and let town, I mean, if town meeting's not in favor of it, right? Then we'll still be left with Housing Authority's option. So I mean, I'm, I'm half inclined to leave it and just see what happens, you know, other, other side of your coin, really. So, I mean, if, if the motion is to withdraw, I mean, can't come from me, you guys. You gotta help me out. But it's up to.
Make a motion to withdraw it from the end.
Okay. So motion to withdraw has been made.
Has to be seconded, and then we.
Do I have a second? Okay. No second? Motion fails?
Make a motion to leave it on.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion to leave it? Well, that's, I mean, it's, it's already on there, right? Do we have to make a motion to leave it?
Just make a motion or decide whether or not you want to recommend favorable or unfavorable.
Okay, so that, yeah, there we go. All right, so if you want to tweak that to be favorable or unfavorable? It's already on there.
Favorable.
All right, so Joe's made a motion.
Yeah.
In, in favor of support of Article 28. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of the favorable vote of Article 28?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? What'd you say? So you're abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. So we got 3-1-1. Here's a fun one for everybody. We don't get those every day. All right. John, do we have any more?
No, sir.
That was it?
That was it for that.
Okay. All right. I didn't know, because I, I saw an email from you about Article 27, so I didn't know if you wanted to vote for my.
Historical shed?
Yeah.
All right, well, you know, I don't want to put you guys in a bad position against voting, against seniors in the group that runs the Historical Commission. I'm not in favor of the Historical Shed moving forward. I think we've been working with that committee just to try to get things organized. And I think that adding more space at this time would be counterproductive. But again, I, I certainly can understand if the board wants to vote in favor of it, vote against it, whatever, whatever's your pleasure. I just wanted to.
Sure.
Point it out to you in case you wanted to take a position.
So up until this point, we've, we've not made a stance on this. I'm not asking the board to take a stance on this. I'm just reacting to Paul's email, so.
That was my question. Do we even have to take it?
We do not. We do not. I, I agree. I think that the Historical Commission can be better focused in terms of their approach. But again, not asking this, this board to take a, take a vote on that. All right, 503, DEI Committee update. So it was my fault at our last meeting that I had not connected with Members Spejo around plans moving forward for a special meeting. Mike and I did get a chance to talk between our last meeting and this meeting. We did learn in the interim that Mr. Dinesio knows of a very well-accredited speaker and trainer as well as the DEIC and BGIC here, recognizing you. The DEIC has also put together a, almost like a syllabus of recommendations around meetings that we can, we can hold and conduct. So what I'm going to do is between now and our next meeting, you know, kind of iron that out and distill it down. Hopefully get a hold of Mr. Dinesio's contact, talk with him and see what we can do, and then see, bring to the board for, for the discussion. So I just wanted to provide that update quickly. I know now it's, it's 7:10 and we're, we're cooking fast and furious towards town meeting. So with that, I turn to subcommittee reports. Mr. Spejo?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Morandi?
Something really quick. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Pandoffo, Jay Pandoffo, for being the new head coach at Boston University a few years ago. We all remember he came here, was on the common with the Stanley Cup, then he came back again for a second time with the Stanley Cup. Obi Baker, runner-up, national champion, and now he's the head coach at Boston University. So I'd like to congratulate the Pandoffo family and Jay, so.
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic. I mean, a huge compassion to the whole board, really. That's, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Actually, yes.
Yeah.
Might be appropriate.
Yeah. Mike, anything?
No, sir, not for me.
Jim?
Hi, I have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. From the Fire Department, this past May 4th was International Firefighters Days, Firefighter Day, and we'd like to acknowledge the work that our firefighters do each and every day. Second, the Police and Fire Department participated in ASHA full-scale exercise back on April 3rd, 2022 at the Burlington Mall. Over 160 individuals participated in the event, and we'd like to thank NERAC and EOPS for sponsoring the event, as well as Simon Properties, who hosted the event. From the Fire Chief, as of May 1st, outside burning will no longer be permitted through the Burlington Fire Department. And from the Fire Marshal's Office, they're reporting that a number of structural fires have recently been caused by improperly discarded oily rags. And oily rags can be, can spontaneously, can be, can spontaneously combust. So to dispose of oily rags, hang them outside to dry and spread the rags out flat with a weighted object on top. Store the rags in a small airtight metal container, add water to the container, and then you can dispose the container during a local hazardous waste collection event. Second, item is small cell. I was talking to Mr. Sagarino tonight. Small cell, committee's going to convene probably in June to update our lookout policy, update it, and just to, you know, move on from there and, you know, do a few housekeeping things on the small cell issue. And finally, congratulations to all the athletes and their buddies who participated in today's Special Olympics Unified Games over in Wilmington. So congrats to them. They had a great weather and a little windy, but they did, had a good time.
Awesome. Just two quick things. Chairman's report, first, is that Paul and I have been in communication with the folks at the Collins Center, working forward, forward toward a slightly revised scope of work after we have met with Tanya and Morgan, who were here about a month ago to talk to us about the plan. Great people. I think that it's going to be great. They think they can finish it in 10 months. So really, hopefully, if we can kick it off in the next month, it'll be done by the end of, you know, just, just past the end of the year, which is, which is great. And then just as a reminder, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So just, please keep that in mind. You know, everyone's going through their own thing. Please give grace where you can. Paul, to you for Town Administration's report. Anything heading, as we head squarely into the, the eye of the storm?
I specifically didn't prepare one tonight, Mr. Chairman, in anticipation of having to rush down to the high school, so.
Excellent. Well, with that, we can all hop in our cars and rush down to the high school. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion is moved. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 5-0-0. Good night, everybody.